Good evening and welcome to the July 11th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Will you please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, the council tonight is wearing blue as a small gesture just to show our support for our police department and all law enforcement. We will now have a moment of silence for all those affected by the tragic events over the past few weeks.
Shildroth?
Here.
Hanke?
Here.
Bugano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Syam?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of June 27, 2016? Hearing non-councilman Lee moves to approve the minutes seconded by Mr. Hanke. All in favor? Aye.
Opposed?
The meeting minutes are approved. The next dynamon the agenda is a hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening, for three minutes. This is not a question and answer period. If you would like to speak to a council member or the mayor, please wait until after the meeting. If you are here to speak on a public hearing, we ask that you wait till that public hearing is announced. And I am going to make a motion that these are limited, since there are so many of them this evening, that we are limiting to two minutes. Seconded by Mr. Hanke. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. So we will go to Marvin Tobias.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marvin Tobias. I reside at 1335 Bell Tower Drive, Florissant, Missouri 63033. I wanted to come here today to talk about a situation that occurred here a couple of, actually occurred in Florissant a couple of weeks ago. I first want to say that I appreciate and understand that the Florissant Police Department does a lot of community outreach to try and establish trust with the community, whether that be their, whether that be with doing tours, which was just repeat, just was just on the news, whether they do the explore program, they're trying to present an image that they are involved, they play football with kids that they see on the street, which has been, which have been viral last year. And those are all things that are built to establish trust for the community, to see a police officer as an actual person doing a very difficult job. My only concern with the establishment development of trust is that there's also a communication portion of that. And by the communication portion of that, which is why I come before the council, is that as a council member, you, you are, you do have access to a lot of the different data that the attorney general might pull out. And I know that police have a difficult job, but I'm concerned that when they are pulling over seventy-three, seventy-three percent of their stops are African Americans, that could change how an individual might actually see that particular community. That's not to say that an individual is racist, it's just like every moment of every day, every stop, I know there might be a bad communication or an issue with how I communicate. This particular police department does things with racial profiling, with training, they do, they repeatedly do things with biased policing, I know that they do that. But I just want to ensure that as a member of the community, that I am aware of all the particular efforts that they do to ensure that when their officers interact with a public member, that I, I am abreast of that. I know that they're doing specific things, I know they're doing focus groups, or surveys, or communications that let me know, hey, we realize that we can be impacted, we don't want to be that type of police department, we're being proactive, and this is what we can do, and this is what we can share. And that's my two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Adams?
Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I appreciate it, I appreciate all you guys do for us. My name is Don Adams, I live at 240 Franciscan Drive in Florissant, I've occupied that house for forty-two years. I had the pleasure when I moved out here of being here when Mayor Egan ran this city, and this city was wonderful. There's things going on in this city now, it's on a slippery slope to slide down, and I'm afraid of where it is going, such as people having these RVs and blocking the sidewalk. It don't mean a difference if the sidewalk's blocked a foot, six inches, or whatever, they're blocking the sidewalk. And you call about it, and the code enforcement comes out and says, well, you got room to walk around it. If you're blocking the sidewalk, you're blocking the sidewalk. If somebody comes up and robs you, and you give them their money, your money, it don't mean a difference if they got a gun or a knife and don't say anything, they robbed you, right? So if they're blocking the sidewalk, they're blocking the sidewalk. That's, that's, stuff like that needs to be enforced. Who wants to see a big RV? I don't think you'd see that out in Ladue, or Clayton, see these big RVs parked in people's driveways. I'd be shocked if you do, let's put it that way. The other thing is, I don't know where this come from, of being able to set stuff out at the curb for free, okay? This is the kind of stuff that makes Florissant look like a junkyard, okay? And it needs to stop. It needs to stop, okay? The other thing is, I know back when Mayor Egan was here, there was different ordinances because they had people drive around, normally it was in the dead of winter when you couldn't do nothing about it, as far as like painting your houses and things like that. But I know he was a stickler for having weeds growing in between the cracks of your driveway, the cracks of your sidewalks. That's not being enforced no more. If these things aren't enforced, we have rules to make the community look nice. If people can't enforce, they can't live by these rules, then they shouldn't live in the community. This community was a fine community for forty-two years, but I'm not seeing that, I'm not seeing that anymore. And if it wouldn't be for people like Jackie and Tim Jones here, and a few of your other people, I don't know where this city would be. But this city is on a slippery slope, and it's not the uphill side. Thank you.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Kevin Powers, I've lived in Florissant for most of my adult life, twenty-eight years, minus my short time when I served in the Army. Anyways, I did not plan on coming up here and speaking, but...
What's your address, sir?
Twenty-five twenty Parker Road. Lived most of that though at thirty-sixty St. Catherine when I was here. I'm just here to request that the breed-specific legislation that's going on in Florissant be repealed. And that's mainly the point of this. That's it, it's short and sweet.
All right, thank you. We can, if you don't mind, we can hold the applause for a little bit, maybe when we're all finished, thank you. Michael Cardenas?
Did I have it the first time?
I did.
Are you all night?
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Cardenas Salas, two-four-seven-five Stony End Court, Florissant, Missouri 63031. I am here tonight to encourage the repeal of the ban in Florissant. Our group has been, has actually put together a report regarding animal bite statistics. We filed Missouri sunshine law requests with the cities of Florissant, Columbia, and Boone County. Boone County represents all of Boone County with the exception of the city of Columbia. We compared bite statistics between Florissant and other municipalities with no breed-specific laws. Columbia and Florissant are similar in racial diversity and demographics, however, Columbia's population is more than double the amount of Florissant. Florissant and Boone County have similar population numbers. The following is the information we received from the sunshine law request. The current year-to-date, Florissant has a total of thirty-eight animal bite reports handled by animal control. With the breed ban in effect, twenty-nine percent of animal, I'm sorry, animal bites this year were reported as pit bulls. For the current year, Columbia, with more than double the population of Florissant, and no breed-specific laws, had a total of fifty-five animal bait ca, bite cases reported. Of those cases, twenty-five percent have been reported as pit bull or pit bull mixes. For the current year-to-date, Boone County has had a total of forty bites, with twenty-five percent of those being recorded as pit bull or pit bull mixes. We also requested a list of dogs deemed dangerous in jurisdictions from January 1st, 2015 till present. During this time in Florissant, three dogs have deemed dangerous by animal control. One is a cane corso, one is a bull mastiff, and the third is a rot mix. In Columbia, they have five dogs as dangerous, those dogs are a hound lab mix, two pit bulls, one husky, and one border collie. In Boone County, there are two dogs dangerous, one pit bull and one American bulldog. Florissant already has a strong dangerous dog ordinance, however, our public safety officials are not able to focus on those resources to enforce that, enforce that ordinance as they should, due to the distraction of the breed-specific language. Please look into making this city's animal laws up to standards with other cities that have been repealing breed-specific language.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Mindy Boyer? Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
It's Mindy Boyer at eleven-sixty Pamela Drive, Florissant, Missouri. Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for taking this time to listen to me tonight. I'm here to ask you to consider repealing the ban on pit bulls and pit bull look-alikes here in our wonderful city. I've worked in the animal field since I was fifteen years old, I've done grooming, kennel work, and adoption assistance. I am currently a groomer. In 2006, I owned an American pit bull terrier, she was only six months old, fully vaccinated, well-trained, fixed, everything. One day I will not forget, my neighbor had her pit bull taken away, because that's when the ban started, and my dad told me I had to get rid of mine, so she wouldn't get taken away. So I worked in a kennel in Chesterfield, Missouri at that time, and found a coworker of mine to take her, so she wouldn't get taken away. She was just a baby, she had no idea why, she couldn't stay with me, the city let her down. The city let me and a responsible pet owner down, however, you can begin to make things right by repealing this ineffective law and preventing this heartbreak from happening to other responsible owners. There is currently a dog running loose in my neighborhood, I've called animal control on it before, they just tell me they can't catch it, they can't do anything about it, and I live right behind a park. So I've caught him, I've brought him back to the owner safely, but I'm just feared, you know, I don't know if he, to me, he's nice, but I don't know when he gets in the park, what he's gonna do. I ask you please repeal the breed ban here in the city, it is distracting our animal control department from problems they should be addressing, and it's hurting responsible pet owners. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, please state your name and address.
Hi, Sonya Wood, nineteen-twenty Patterson Road, Florissant, 63031.
You may want to pull the mic closer to you.
I'm short, sorry. I, I live in Florissant, I've lived here for forty-seven years, my parents have lived here for longer than that. I've never been to one of these meetings before, but I felt it was very important to make my opinion known about the ban on the pit bulls, and I really think that it's unfair, and I would appreciate it if it was taken away. I had a very good dog who protected me and my daughters from people who they didn't know. She's no longer around, obviously, but they're good dogs, and I don't think that everybody in the Florissant is gonna get a dog, and I don't think that they're going to be a pit bull, and I don't think they're gonna be running around causing havoc. I think you guys should let us be adults and take care of our animals ourselves, and let us have pit bulls if we would like.
All right, thank you. Pam King Wheatley? Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Pam King Wheatley, I live at twenty-six-fifty-six Clovermere Court. I believe I'm a process server, so I knock on a lot of doors, I have dealings with a lot of dogs. Doggy treats work pretty good, so far. I haven't had any other problems, fortunately. It doesn't matter on the breed, little ones are just as vicious as the big ones, and I just don't see the, the sense in it. It's deterred other people from moving to our city, makes people who are in our city choose between their dogs and have to vacate. I've lost two neighbors because of the ordinance being put in place, and I'd like to see it repealed. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Hello, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peggy Mullen Slater, I live at twelve-seventy-five Sandy Drive in Florissant, Missouri. I've lived there fifty-three years. Good evening, Mr. Snyder, and the rest of the council, we appreciate you hearing from us again this evening. I know we've been, tried to be in contact with several of you throughout the week. I'm afraid we've reached a closed mind. I think you have your minds made up, and you don't care what evidence we can put forward to help the situation. There are families who have mixed pit bulls, are large-headed dogs that are being judged as pit bulls. I don't know how many of you own a pet. If you own a pet, you have to understand what you're doing to these families. Majority of the families, their pets are their family. They love them just like they do any other member of their family, and care for them the same way. You can't judge every book by its cover. Every situation is different. This law, the way it was written, was not written correctly. There are things that you can do to make sure we do not have vicious dogs in Florissant. That's the laws that need to be enforced. Thank you for your time, have a good evening, and God bless.
Thank you. Good evening, please just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Halter, and I live at four-zero-three-six Terabera in Florissant. Good evening, members of the city council, I am here tonight to touch on a topic that is important to me, and it is the breed ban here in Florissant. I would like to give you some facts, because I feel that the best decisions are made when you have factual information, rather than emotions guiding them. First, there is one source that has proven that breed-specific laws help a community in any way, lower the number of dog bites, or prevent a city from having pit bulls in the city limits. There are, however, a large, a lot of organizations that have taken a public stance against breed-specific laws. There are over twenty-five, but just to name a few, the National Animal Control Association, the CDC, the ACK, the ASPCA, and even the American Bar Association. The American Veterinary Medical Association is also against breed-specific laws, various dog training groups, rescue organizations, and animal welfare groups as well. The American Temperament Test Society is another organization that has taken a public stance against the breed-specific laws. They specialize in the temperament testing of dogs, and do a thorough testing throughout the year. Now, you've probably heard before, but yes, the three most aggressive dog breeds are the Dachshund, the Black, the Dach, Dachshund, sorry, the Jack Russell, and the Chihuahua. But did you know that there are other large-sized dogs tested pretty far below the American pit bull terrier and the American Stratus fire terrier? For example, the Afghan Hound, the Australian Cattle Dog, the Bearded Collie, the Bloodhound, the Carolina Dog, the Shar Pei, the Chow, and the Chinese Crested. Not these are just a small number of examples, but the point is, there are large breeds of dogs that have tested far below any of the bully breeds on temperament testing. The American Pit Bull Terrier was rated in the eighty-six point eight percentile as far as temperament, the American Stratus fire, Stratus fire eighty-five, eighty-four point five. I would like to thank the city council members for listening to me tonight, I greatly appreciate you, and I hope you were, to work together on this, to help make Florissant safer by repealing the breed-specific laws and focusing on the irresponsible owners and dogs proven to be vicious instead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, please state your name and address. Yeah, you can pull it off if you want.
I'm Christina Hoxworth, I live at twenty-three-seventy Mockingbird in Florissant, 63031. Good evening, members and mayor of the city council. I'm here because, as a resident of Florissant, I would love to see my wonderful city repeal its breed-specific legislation. While there are many well-known and credible organizations opposing breed-specific laws, there are no credible sources that have ever proved breed-specific laws actually work. In fact, there is more evidence that these laws hurt communities rather than help them. For example, we contacted a well-known real estate agent for the St. Louis area, we asked her and her team if they have issues with buying and selling homes in Florissant and other cities with breed-specific laws. The response we received from Sarah Bravo was this. I would definitely say that the ban has impacted some of my clients' decisions on where to buy in a negative way for the cities with the ban. I have never had anyone say, I want to move to an area where the ban exists, but have definitely had clients say, I have a pit bull or other breed, and I need to make sure I am in an area where I can have my dog. I know of at least five clients in the past that would not move to any area where a ban existed, and they could not keep their pet. This would be awesome for the market if the restrictions could be removed. Based on her response, and after meeting several people myself, who have either relocated or chosen not to buy property where, here, based on the ban, I have to agree with her that the housing market in Florissant is losing value because of the breed-specific laws here. Not only that, but businesses here are now losing business as a result. Breed-specific laws do not help communities, they hurt them. They place a burden on already strained public departments and officials. This also places a burden on resources, shelters, and private nonprofits dedicating to helping homeless animals. This is due to the influx of dogs as a result of owners forced to comply.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Ramatowsky, I live at eighteen-sixty-five Gardenia here in Florissant. I have been a Florissant resident for over twenty years. I have worked as a vet tech for a Florissant animal clinic for four-plus years, and I now work with animal shelters and with the animal rescue. I feel that we, I feel that we need to work stronger on backyard breeders and owner responsibility laws, and stronger enforcement of our danger, dangerous dog ordinances, and less on our dog breed laws. So I ask the city of Florissant to please take into consideration all the facts that have been given, brought forward this evening, and to repeal the BSL here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Raylene Barton, I live at twenty-four Ridge Lund Court, Florissant, Missouri. I've lived there the better part of sixty years. And I want to express my own personal experiences. I do a lot of political canvassing, knocking on doors, and I do it in the more rural areas, Franklin County, Jeff County, rural St. Charles County, where dogs are running loose, where you'd never know what you're gonna knock on a door and find. Most of the time, the ones that give me the most issue in the puppy and doggy range are the ones that are about knee-high down. Give me a pit bull any day, the one that's gonna sit there and jump on my shoulders and lick me to death. Those are the ones I meet. Those are the ones that are there. They're not vicious. I find more vicious dogs in the German Shepherd, Rottweiler, and a German, whatever they are, Point Pinchers, and the Min Pins, oh god, those things are awful. But, you know, to ban just one breed is wrong. To make it a breed-specific is wrong. You need to do more of a dangerous dog. And punish the owners, the bad owners. They gotta learn to train their dogs, take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Connie Nolan, and I live at one-seventy Ruth Drive, Florissant, Missouri, six-three-oh-three-one. Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I am here tonight to address the issue of breed-specific legislation. I do not agree with the breed ban in Florissant and see it as discrimination. Once upon a time, I was afraid of pit bulls myself. I didn't know a lot about them, and the only thing I ever saw regarding the breed was the terrifying stories in the news. When you don't work in the animal-related field, and you don't own or know any pit bull-type dogs, it's often normal to be afraid. I was personally affected by the city's breed-specific legislation. My neighbor had a pit bull, his name was Red. He was treated very poorly in many ways. First, they'd never let him inside, and then they never let him out. This was after he was attacked by another pit bull, who was still living in the residence, but Red has been removed and adopted out to a family. So my, my, my concern is that the good dog got taken away, and the bad dog is still residing at the residence, and I would like to know if it's because animal control department is limited with their resources and wasting time taking family pets away when they should be looking at the actual vicious attack. That dog is still residing there. I have pictures on my phone, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, please state your name and address for our record.
Nicole Bray, eighteen-forty Curtis Court, Florissant, Missouri, six-three-zero-three-one. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm here tonight supporting a cause that is close to my heart. It has personally affected me, and I sincerely hope after tonight you will look further into this issue. I wish, I would love to see the city of Florissant repeal the breed discriminatory legislation. I have owned dogs and breeds my entire life. I have worked in the animal-related field, including working with stray rescue. I started working with pit bull types in 2008. In 2011, I owned a wonderful mastiff boxer mix named Gotti. Gotti was very special to me, he was our beloved family pet. He was neutered, microchipped, and up to date on all his vaccination. As a responsible pet owner, I always made sure my pets and I were cared for, and I always made sure that he was behaved well. Gotti helped me with my nanny job, he loved the kids I worked for, and he checked on them while they napped, always getting my attention if one of them woke up. My son, was five at the time, was Gotti's best friend. They swam in the pool together and jumped on the trampoline. He was leash-trained and was always walked on a leash. He slept in bed with us, and I miss him dearly. He slept in bed with us, and I miss him dearly. One day will haunt me for the rest of my life. Animal Control knocked on my door. I was shocked because I had never been in trouble with Animal Control. I am a responsible pet owner. They told me I had one week to get rid of Gotti because he looked too much like a pit bull-type dog. After they told me I had a week to get rid of my little boy's best friend, they wrote me a citation, and then told me I could get a DNA test which would cost five hundred dollars upon my part. Please keep in mind that Gotti was labeled as a boxer mastiff by a veterinarian when I rescued him. Because I couldn't afford the testing, I had to rehome Gotti to a home that was safe for laws, from laws like yours. My family was heartbroken. Gotti did nothing wrong, and he didn't understand why we had to say goodbye. After this life-changing event, I decided to move outside of the city limits. I didn't want to be a part of a city that would do something so horrible, a city that I once loved and cherished.
Thank you. I'm sorry. William Johnson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm William Johnson. I reside at twenty-eight fifty-five Parker Road in Florissant, six-three-zero-three-three. I'm here to voice my support for maintaining the current city ordinance regarding the ban of pit bulls and related breeds. There was a recent report in Time Incorporated, reported by Time Incorporated, pit bulls only make up six percent of the dog population, but they account for sixty-eight percent of dog attacks and fifty-two percent of dog-related deaths since nineteen eighty-two. Another report published by the Annals of Surgery reported that a pit bull kills one person every fourteen days, and two people are injured every day by a pit bull. Young children are especially at risk. I find it kind of interesting that that report was provided by, two-time, by PETA, the world's largest animal rights organization. Being a retired military veteran, I was particularly interested in what the policy is on military housing. I have found that the U.S. Military has established uniform policy banning dangerous dogs on all domestic privatized housing, foreign and domestic. One of the things that the people that want us to repeal the ban argue is that it's unconstitutional. That is not true. The Supreme Courts of eleven states have ruled specific breed legislation is indeed constitutional. That position was affirmed by the United States Supreme Court on February nineteenth, two thousand eight, by refusing to hear an appeal from the Ohio Supreme Court. I know that the, it's often said that it's a responsibility of the owner. Well, in closing, I'm certain that the family located in Michigan on the sixth of July felt they were being very responsible when their son, ten years old, was mauled by a family pet, pit bull. The boy suffered severe injuries to his face, left arm, and left ear. Since this terrible event, the parents have turned-
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Amy Harrison, six-nine-five Hargrove Lane, Florissant, six-three-zero-three-three. I'm here to talk about the bully ban. Breed discriminatory legislation, essentially canine racial profiling, is a misguided attempt to reduce injuries. According to Best Friends Animal Society, ID of the breed makeup of a dog is highly imprecise. DNA tests are available but limited to the breeds that have been catalogued. For those not catalogued, there is no way other than through experience and observation of physical traits and characteristics to determine the breed of a dog. The subjective and inaccurate way of identifying a quote-unquote offender is not only unfair but terrifying to dog owners whose pets have even the slightest physical resemblance to breeds included in the legislature, yet do not share any genetic makeup or have any history of behavioral problems. The nature of this method of ID allows for the possibility of error by allowing legally permitted dogs to be captured and euthanized solely based on a person's opinion on the dog breed's makeup. In addition to the difficulty identifying breed makeup, regulation of specifically breeds for the reduction of dog-related injuries is inherently flawed since there is no proof that violent behavior is hereditary. It can be argued, though, that a dog's tendency to bite could be affected by socialization or lack of, proper or improper obedience training, supervision, conditions of living for the dog, victim's behavior, and whether or not the dog is spayed or neutered. We all want safe communities for people and pets. We also want our communities to be protected against dangerous dogs. We want abused dogs to be protected against reckless owners as well. This goal of public safety should be achieved in the most effective and most thorough way possible. Breed discriminatory legislation does not contribute to that goal. Not only does it fail to enhance public safety, it interferes with citizens' property rights and is extremely expensive for communities to enforce. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna Slummer. Please state your name and address for the record.
Donna Slummer, twenty-six twelve Poe Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-one-four. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I am owner of a mobile pet care service with currently over fifty clients in the beautiful city of Florissant. Two of those clients are currently looking for new homes closer to us so they can adopt the dogs they want as part of their family. I came here tonight to share more information with you regarding the breed being discriminated against and ask that you reconsider the breed-specific legislation. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, are you aware that pit bulls are being trained as police officers and are already police officers in cities like Baltimore and Dallas and many more cities, and will soon be making their way into your city to protect and serve right alongside your finest police officers? How will you justify this ban when that day comes? Just like German Shepherds, who, let me remind you, was the breed to ban twenty years ago, and look where they are now. But just like German Shepherds, these pit bulls are smart, spoken highly of, and are an asset to the cities they are currently serving. They are protecting their public, their fellow officers, and bringing assistance and guidance to wounded veterans. I can send you information on those four-legged officers at your request. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Carpenter. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Carpenter, and my address is nine ninety Cheyenne Drive, Florissant, Missouri. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the BSL law in Florissant. I had a neighborly dispute which started out small and turned into something very large. My dogs I have, they, I guess, my neighbors were getting annoyed with them, so they decided that they were going to start spraying my dogs with the hose. I then called the police to file a police report that my dogs were being antagonized by my neighbors. At that point, nothing was done. Nothing was said to my neighbors, nothing at all. Couple days later, health enforcement showed up at my house and told me that I had to remove the two dogs that I owned. Keep in mind that my dogs are comfort dogs for my grandmother, who is going through health issues at this time. She currently has moved out of the house, and I have too, so that way I can keep my dogs. There is a vacant house sitting there now due to this law. That house has been in my family for over thirty years, and I am the only person that can take that house over. So if this law is not lifted, we are forced to let that house go. I'm here to just request that you guys lift the BSL law so I can go back to living in Florissant, continue living in Florissant, and, you know, enjoy the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joshua Polsky. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Joshua Polsky. I live at seven-four-eight Loke's Drive, Florissant, Missouri, six-three-zero-three-one. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am a Florissant resident. I have lived in this city for over twenty years. I love this city. I am proud of this city. I like to tell people that I live in Florissant. I want people like me to be able to move into this great city. I appreciate the need for public safety. However, sometimes I sit back and I question what our breed ban is accomplishing. Is the law punishing bad dog owners, or is the law punishing innocent dogs who have done nothing except be born a specific way? I had an experience within the last year which dealt with this exact situation. I have an elderly neighbor who was raising a sweet pit mix. She was told that she would need to remove the dog from the premises. This was upsetting to me because the dog did nothing wrong and didn't deserve this treatment. She was the sweetest dog and loved everybody that she encountered. I just didn't feel this was right. It seemed that we were punishing both the dog and my neighbor. My neighbor loved this dog, and the dog loved my neighbor back. It was going to break my neighbor's heart to have to get rid of this dog. There was nothing that could be done. My neighbor is the type of dog owner that we want in Florissant. Her dog was the type of dog we want and we should want in Florissant, friendly, well-trained, and owned by a responsible pet owner. I would rather have my whole street full of pit bulls or pit mixes, all with good owners, than have bad owners with dangerous dogs living on the street. This should be how we all look at this situation, dangerous dogs versus dogs that aren't dangerous. Regardless of breed, a dog's appearance alone is not a factor that you can use in deciding if the dog is dangerous or not. I hope we can look at removing this ordinance and modify it to punish the true criminals here, the owners who raise dangerous dogs regardless of the breed, those who I want out of Florissant. I'll end with this quote, "Dogs don't rationalize. They don't hold anything against a person. They don't see the outside of a human but the inside of a human." And that's said by Caesar Milan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Sullivan. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is, my name is Mandy Sullivan. I live at six-eight-five Madison Lane in Florissant, Missouri. I'm here again to talk to you about BSL, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. There are some constitutional rights being violated here, and I would like to see that change. Our dogs are our property, and they cannot be taken away from us legally unless it can be proven that they constitute a danger to the general public. There is no evidence available anywhere that any particular breed is more dangerous to the public. Media hype is the main source that people who support breed bans get their information from, and that is not a credible source. If you talk to the experts and you research the well-known credible sources, you will see that there is nothing good that comes from having breed-specific laws. Breed-specific laws infringe on citizens' equal protection rights. The equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment states that certain similarly circumstanced individuals cannot be deprived of their property while other similarly circumstanced individuals are not unless it can be demonstrated that there is a rational basis, like public safety, for doing so. So in the case of breed, of the breed ban, why is it then that certain individuals are being deprived of their property while other similarly circumstanced individuals are not? There is no rational basis for doing so. I have some information from a court case, Diaz versus the City of the County of Denver in two thousand and ten. The government should have no interest in seizing, boarding, and destroying dogs who are not dangerous. In the breed ban context, the governmental interest is lessened because the dogs being seized have done nothing actionable in a dangerous dog context. Instead, they simply look like a pit bull-type dog. Consequently, it is questionable whether breed bans serve a rational basis in protecting public safety. Breed bans allow the seizure of dogs without a warrant, probable cause, and ultimately without due process. This is dangerous, this is a dangerous licorice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. We'll move to public hearings. Public hearings, number sixteen oh-seven oh-two-one.
In accordance with Section four oh-five, three tenants of Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at nine fifty-five Russeign Francois on Monday, July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, at seven-thirty PM on the following proposition. To authorize an amendment to special use permit, or special permit number twenty-seven fourteen, as amended by ordinance numbers thirty-five eleven, sixty-one fifty-three, and seventy-six fifty, to FM Three BP Associates LLC, DBA, CVS, to allow for the addition to existing ground sign for the property located at six-nine-six North Highway sixty-seven, formerly known as four-nine-two through seven-ninety North Highway sixty-seven. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing. We're calling eight-three-nine-seven-six-three-zero, or TDD, eight-three-nine-five-one-four-two.
Is the petitioner present? Are you going to need the overhead?
Yeah, I think so. It's, I think we will.
That one will switch on the top. All the way over, there you go.
I'm Mike Modarelli. I'm with Bianco Properties, six-eighty Craig Road, Creve Court, Missouri. Okay, we're here tonight to amend a special use permit that we currently have for the existing sign at Florissant Meadow Shopping Center. And I think the, the way it's written might be a little bit incorrect. It states for CVS. The sign really doesn't have anything to do with CVS. It is BP Three Associates LLC, which was in the application package from the beginning. So I think we need to kind of work that out, but otherwise, we did bring that up in the planning and zoning meeting. Again, this is currently the existing sign. You see our electronic message center that's on there. And what we're proposing to do, we're keeping the dimensions of the overall sign, so this entire sign, the same. However, we want to remove the existing EMC. We want to put in a full-color EMC, and in this open space right here, we want to install a cabinet with a CVS pharmacy panel in that location. And the sign itself remains in the exact same location that it is on the property.
Yeah, so the sign, not going to say basically remains unchanged, but the footprint of the sign is the same. You can see the before, basically the before and after. You're just going to change the, the moving sign board, if you will, and insert a CVS pharmacy banner above that.
That's correct.
But nothing changes. The footprint doesn't change.
Footprint doesn't change. The way we operate the electronic message center will not change from the way we are currently operating the existing message center, with the exception that the new one will have photos on it, but we'll still run it in the nine-second increments that we currently run under the existing ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Yes, sir. So this is going to be the actual, come on, right there, is going to be the actual marquee sign, correct? Instead of this one, you're just translating them over?
That's correct. That's correct.
And updating them?
No, we're going from, currently that's an amber-colored electronic message sign that has the amber-colored letters that change. So it's a, it's a electronic sign. And we're going with a full-color electronic message center, or EMC, which will, this will change every nine seconds. Each tenant in the shopping center gets a message, and we run through every tenant. If there are twenty-four tenants, we run through twenty-four signs. And then we go to our second file, which would be twenty-four more signs for each tenant that are slightly different than the last one.
So we, each tenant that you have in the shopping mall will be on that sign, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Egan.
Thank you. Thank you. To verify that you're also going to stay within the brightness that you currently have now, you're not going to make it brighter than it is?
That's correct. Actually, these signs, and Mr. Williams can, can probably comment a little better than I can, but basically, the full-color electronic message signs have a built-in sensor for night and day, and they actually regulate it much better than the current amber or red signs do. And it's important because, and I, sometimes I get this wrong, we have a lot of these at our properties throughout the country, but basically, a lot of times, these lights, these signs are too bright during the day, so they have to tone them down when you have bright sunlight out. And they, they can also do the same thing at nighttime where they can get too bright, so they'll automatically censor it down.
Right, thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, five-twelve Rancho Lane, Ward Four, Florissant, Missouri, six-three-zero-three-one. I'm against the sign. In fact, it was up to me. I would, I would revoke the special use permit and have them put the sign back where it belongs. It sits right on the edge of Lindbergh, right there at Patterson, Lindsey. These gentlemen don't live there. I have to drive by there every day, even with the little messages that go- I have to drive by there every day, even with the little messages that go by. People can't even drive down there. They don't know where they're going. Going straight, cutting over on me. I've had people make three turns on Patterson and nearly take out the side of my car. We don't need more text signs. To me, it seems like we're trying to become some kind of little Las Vegas. If you look at Car Stop, no, Auto, I mean Auto Stop. Auto Stop is in Hazelwood, but their sign is really bright, okay? You've seen that over there by Outback, okay? Across from Dirt Cheap. And then you go down the street, and then you've got Deerburgs. And Deerburgs, I've kind of got used to now because it's been there so long. And theirs doesn't flash 40 different messages. And then you get down to the Car Wash, where they also have a sign that's close to the road that's got a flashing message sign on it. They came back, got a special use permit after they found out that the sign was in the wrong place. And it failed the plans. But anyway, and then we've got Ruase, then we've got Culvers, then we've got the church down there. All these flashing signs, it looks like we're going to have a, we're trying to make this a Las Vegas or something. And if you look at where the sign's located, you can see Lindbergh right there, and you can see Lindsey Lane, left turn for Lindsey, right there in front of Club Fitness, to the left. That monstrosity of a building that they're building for CVS that looks like, what a friend of mine told me this past weekend, it looked like it was going to be a megaplex theater, as tall as it is, how big it is. It dwarfs that sign. It dwarfs that, the main sign there. And to have the change, the flashing sign, changing sign, we've got to deal with Lindbergh and Patterson, Lindbergh and Lindsey. Then there's like four, three or four lanes of traffic there. You've got people texting on the phones as it is. Then they're going to be texting on the street, looking at the text to see what's special at Florissant Meadows this week. I'm against this, and I think everybody should, this should go back to either relocate that sign away from that, the building, get it away from the street, for one thing. We've got enough flashing lights and everything to distract the drivers as it is. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Seeing no further comments, Councilman Jones moves to close this public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Mr. O'Donnell, I think you're at the wrong sign, Kevin. You said Lindsey Lane, which pulls into Ward 2. That's the sign about a quarter mile down next to White Castles. This one is further back, Lindbergh. The one you're talking about, Kevin, is not even on the screen.
Yes, it is. That's the one right there.
Can you pull that back off there, you guys? Kevin, this one here is not the one by Lindsey Lane. There's a whole nother sign that sits back about 300 or 400 feet further down.
There's one down the street from there. This is the one I'm talking about, right here, the one right behind the building of CVS.
Lindsey Lane sign is the one further down, Kevin, not this one.
But you know what? People have to get over to those lanes. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
That's going to be a mess. Just like I said about Garrison and Lindbergh.
All right. Seeing no further comments, Mr. Jones moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing is now closed. Public hearing number 1607022.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rous Saint-François on Monday, July 11, 2016, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize an amendment to special permit number 5974 as amended by ordinance number 7842 to Commercial Bank to allow for a new landscaping plan for the property located at 400 West Washington. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm Karen Weespin, Senior Vice President of Commercial Bank. My address is 658 Daughtry Terrace, Manchester, Missouri.
Thank you. Just turn that little switch on the top.
Other way. Face you. There you go. Now flip it.
There you go.
That really was.
Yeah.
All right, let's try it.
We'll get it. We got a smaller one.
You got the small. You got the one that I did for planning and zoning. There you go. That's good.
There it is. Yes, we got it.
Finally. Good thing I'm in banking.
Excuse me. Can we quiet down in the audience, please?
All right. This is our new landscaping. Truly what it was, 19 years old, it just needed to be updated. We, where we're located directly across from Valley of the Flowers, very instrumental location, location, location. So it was very important that we got that done in time for Valley of Flowers. We're very involved in that. You've got to come by it, looks great. So we're here to get that. And I know we're zoned, a special use permit because of that, so, there we go. Thank you for that, so.
Mr. Childress.
Good evening, Ms. Weisman. How are you? Anytime a business improves the landscaping in the city of Florissant, it's a plus, and you always keep your property up. And I appreciate that, and I think the additions are really good. Thank you.
Mr. Hanke.
Just to piggyback on what Keith said, we're going over to planning and zoning minutes. I was very impressed that you wanted to get this done before the Valley of Flowers because it's right along our parade route by there. Thanks for being a good steward in our city.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment? Seeing no further comments, Councilman Childress moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take it.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item on the agenda would be second readings. Substitute bill number 9199. Councilman Jones moves to accept the substitute bill, seconded by Mr. Siam. All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carried. Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Jake Mur LLC, DBA, DC Liquors to allow for a packaged liquor store in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 39 Florissant Oaks Shopping Center.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6305 as amended to allow for the relocation of the sign, post sign for the property located at 3025 North Highway 67.
Councilman Siam moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6305 as amended to allow for the relocation of the post sign for the property located at 3025 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes, sir.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill number 9199 passes and becomes ordinance number 8240. Bill number 9200. Councilman Siam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed?
Orders to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6305 as amended to allow for the relocation of the sign, post sign for the property located at 3025 North Highway 67.
Councilman Siam moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6305 as amended to allow for the relocation of the post sign for the property located at 3025 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill number 9200 passes and becomes ordinance number 8241. Bill number 9201. Councilman Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Orders amending Section 510 minimum standards for dwellings, dwelling units, and accessory buildings and commercial buildings by amending Section 510 020 and adding a new Section 510 405 regarding the registration of vacant residential buildings.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Opposed?
Orders amending Section 510 minimum standards for dwelling, dwelling units, and accessory buildings and commercial buildings by amending Section 510 020 and adding a new Section 510 405 regarding the registration of vacant residential buildings.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Good evening. Please state your name and address.
John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant. On this particular bill, 9201, and ordinance amending Section 510 indicates also applies to commercial buildings. Within the body of this bill, line 30, if you're looking at the bill, says residential buildings. Line 36 says residential and commercial buildings. On line 41, residential buildings. Line 45, once again, says residential vacant buildings. Line 49, residential vacant property. And once again, on line 52, subject to the owners of the property to be registered under this section. I understand the registration purposes, and I can appreciate that, trying to find out the applicable owners of the property. On line 56, once again, we talk about residential vacant property. On line 64, utility statuses. All this seems to indicate residential property and not commercial property. We have several large developments, Plaza Madrid, that has been an eyesore to our city. Nothing has been done, it's been vacant. What's going to happen when this bill passes? Will it be torn down? Will we raise the building? What about the other buildings, Grand Uvett Plaza? We have vacancy after vacancy after vacancy. And again, this applies to commercial buildings as well. On line 72 of the bill, residential vacant property restrictions, goes on to say a number of times, fees required by the sergeant shall be paid in full prior to the issuance of any building or occupancy permit. On these particular fees that this is going to raise, are these dedicated funds to a building program, or are they going to go to general revenue? For the city council and the administration to spend it foolishly and ridiculous. Your fiduciary responsibility, again, has been challenged. Please stand up and do something about this. And I can appreciate the vacancies, but it's not going to stop it. Thank you.
Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill number 9201 passes and becomes ordinance number 8242. Bill number 9202. Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Siam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders amending Article 14 residential rental real estate by amending Section 605 457 and 605 460 regarding real estate, resident, real estate license fees.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to Please state your name and address for the record.
John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant. I don't know why I'm taking my time to come before the city council, because of no deliberation on the floor, and I've asked this about this before. This ordinance is being passed. I think it's unjust and unfair to me as a landlord and to my tenants. I have continually spoke against this. I said the initial application for the rental licenses was too low, but now $50 per unit is, I think, is excessive and abusive to the landlords and to the tenants of this community. On line 15, it says fee to $50 per unit. How is this money going to be used? Is it going to general revenue to be used, or is it going to be a dedicated account to help homeowners in terms of issuing of home maintenance items, help out individuals who have may have a financial strain? I find this, again, why I come before you is ridiculous because your minds are already made up. There's no deliberation, no discussion. Pass it as you feel, but I will protest it.
Mr. Engelmeyer, this was a vote of the people. This is what was on the ballot. We're just putting it into the ordinance. The people voted for this 70% in favor.
May I speak? I don't want to challenge the authority of this board. I understand that. I was against it then, I'm against it now. The vote of the people maybe did not quite understand the impact, particularly to the landlords and their tenants. I was attending the many meetings that we've had here, the ones that I knew that were being held, and spoke again against this bill. I do not find it to be an opportunity but prejudicial against landlords and tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill number 9202 passes and becomes ordinance number 8243. The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item in new business is board appointments. Mr. Siam?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to appoint Coran Brownell, 1440 Yearling Drive, to the Citizens Participation Committee. Thank you.
I didn't get the name.
Coran Brownell. Should I spell it?
Councilman Siam moves to appoint Coran Brahman?
Brown L. Brown dash E L. Yeah.
I'm sorry. To the CPC committee. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
The appointment is made. Mr. Childress.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make this appointment, I would like to thank Mrs. Elizabeth Bowling for her years of service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And having said that, I would like to appoint Mr. John Latrell, 155 Bradley Lane, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Councilman Childress moves to appoint John Latrell to the Planning and Zoning Commission, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The appointment's made.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make my appointment, I would like to compliment Mrs. Shuldrough for appointing Mr. Latrell. of the workings of the city that would be beyond someone that didn't work for the city. Also, my little-known fact is that my, when I was first elected to the city council, Mr. Latrell was an opponent of mine in 1979. Anyway, so, it's a very good appointment. I talked to John recently and I encouraged him to seek that, so, thank you. I'd like to appoint, as a youth member, to the Youth Advisory Commission, Abdullah Brown from Ward Nine. And as an adult member, constant hard, as an adult member of the Youth Advisory Commission.
Councilman Lee moves to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made. The next item on the agenda is request. We have a request of a transfer of a special use permit number 7377 from Alexander Wong to Leo Liu doing business at Lucky House Restaurant located at 728 South New Florissant Road. I will move to approve the request, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The request is approved. The next item on the agenda is bills for first reading, bill number 9203.
Orders to authorize amendment to special permit number 2714 as amended for FM3 B3 Associates LLC DBA CVS to allow for the additions to the existing ground sign for the property located at 696 North Highway 67.
Bill number 9204.
Orders to authorize amendment to special permit number 5974 as amended to Commercial Bank to allow for the new landscaping plan for the property located at 400 West Washington.
Bill number 9205.
Orders authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7377 from Alexander Wong to Leo Liu DBA Lucky House Restaurant located at 728 South New Florissant Road.
I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Orders authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7377 from Alexander Wong to Leo Liu DBA Lucky House Restaurant located at 728 South New Florissant Road.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Roll call.
Shildroth? Hanky? Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt? Siam? Lee? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Before the final vote is taken? Oh, I apologize.
Orders authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7377 from Alexander Wong to Leo Liu DBA Lucky House Restaurant located at 728 South New Florissant Road.
Not before that final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shildroth? Hanky? Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt? Siam? Lee? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Bill number 9205 passes and becomes ordinance number 8244. Bill number 9206.
Orders amending section 220, 220015 Ways to Be Collected to Provide Additional Penalties for Failure to Pay for Solid Waste Collection.
All right. Pardon me. Make some motion, Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second for discussion? Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Lee?
I just wanted to take a minute on the next two bills to thank the mayor and thank Mr. Hessel and Mr. Gerald's for their work on this. This was something that we've been working on for a while, and we spent a lot of time last week fine tuning it, and Mr. Hessel got it to us because we wanted to get this to the council, so, thank everybody for their hard work. I think these are, next two are important bills in this city. And I'll move to postpone till the next meeting.
Mayor?
The administration would like to thank Mr. Lee for his hard work on this issue. Mr. Hessel, he worked long and hard on this one.
Bill number 92... Mr. Lee moves to postpone, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Bill number 9207.
Orders amending section 605466 Suspension and Revocation to Add Additional Grounds for Suspension or Revocation of a Residential Rental License and to Recover the Cost for reinstatement of a Residential Rental License.
The next item on the agenda is the council announcements. Mr. Jones?
As always, I would like to give a shout out to Team Our Food Pantry down the street. If anybody's got some loose change in their car or in their pockets, some extra canned goods, if you could please run it down to Team Our Food Pantry, there's always somebody hungry, morning, noon, or night. I'd also like to talk about Shackelford, the road project, I brought it up last council meeting, that'll be starting here shortly. Look, Lee Gas is moving some lines right now, once they get out of the way, the construction will start on the road, so there'll be some congestion there for up to two years, you guys, and that'll go from Charbonneer to Humes. Also on Cortez and Estes, we're still waiting to see what they're gonna do there, it looks like they covered the lines again so the heavy equipment could come in without hitting the power lines. They was going to bore that job so they didn't have to shut down the street, it looks like they are gonna V-ditch that ditch and open it up, so there will be a shutdown there. When that's gonna happen, I do not know. Thanks, and if anybody needs me in Ward Two or anywhere else in this city, all they gotta do is email me or call me, and I will get right back to you. Thanks.
Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, I would like to just make comment on the last Wednesday night out, but Florissant Old Town Partners was a big success, real good time, another part of community right here on St. Francis. If you've never been to one, please try to make the next one, it's a good time, it's a little spotlight on our community. Also, been looking at, get calls from different people on neighbors' property, never on their own, obviously, but there's, the fence line, let's keep an eye on some of the fence lines here, what grows up, you get these weeds, you may cut your grass, but you get these weeds and their little bushes or whatever that are growing on the fence line. If you take care of them right away, they're not a problem at all. If you wait two months, you got a tree growing through your fence, now we got an issue. All's up to say is take a look at your fence line as part of your whole property outlook and take care of it early, prevents you a bigger problem later on. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to remind everyone that the Race to the Shrine is October 22nd. October's a busy month here in the city of Florissant with the Fall Festival and lots of activities. The Race Committee hopes to announce in the next month a very exciting change for next year's Race to the Shrine, but this does go through Old Town, Mr. Hanky's Ward, and it is a, just a great community event. Thank you.
Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, we had the 23rd Friends of Betty Shildroth Golf Tournament at the Florissant Golf Club, and we had a great time. The event was sold out, 120 players, the weather was great, we've already booked it for next year. The course is in fantastic condition, we had a lot of positive comments, and I commend the staff. The funds from this event go to the Mercy Hospital Hostels Program where my late mom got some great care. I would like to congratulate the winning team, they shot 56, and that team was led by celebrity chairman, Mr. Tim Van Gelder, former quarterback for the St. Louis Football Cardinals, Brian Korbesmeyer, Dan Benoist, and an unnamed member of this city council. I would like to thank all the whole sponsors, including this council and the mayor, and the businesses for their donations that have helped make this event a success. I couldn't do it without, and our group could not do it without people like this council and the mayor and the great businesses we have in our city. Our caterer was catering to you, and we did have some leftover, great lunch they served and some soft drinks, and we immediately delivered it to our fine police department, and I know it was very well appreciated, and in this time where they have a really tough job to do, they always do a great job, I would consider doing things like that to our citizens because the guys and gals in our police department really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Siam?
Thank you, Madam President. I actually just wanted to put out a quick reminder for the residents in Ward Nine that the Neighborhood Watch Program meeting for our ward is next Monday, a week from today, July 18th at 7:00 PM in the Arts and Crafts Room of the Egan Center. I will be there, as well as our new ward captain, Andrew Mims, and Officer DeHart, so I hope we have a good turnout, it's a great time to get involved in the Neighborhood Watch Program. That's all I've got, thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I'd like to remind everybody that it's warm outside, make sure you check on your elders, your neighbors, if you have some, your neighbors or elders, this heat'll come up and get you, I work out in it every day, make sure your pets, keep plenty of water in you, this weather will get you. Make sure, another thing, keep your, secure your firearms, make sure you don't keep them in your vehicle, lock them up in your home. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you again, I did want to mention, piggybacking up Mr. Shildroth, I did talk to the chief today regarding the food donations that have come in, he's extremely just overwhelmed with gratitude, the community has been sending lots of food, like most departments are getting that around here, maybe we go easy on the donuts? The guys are starting to, the guys are starting to maybe, you know, eat a lot of the donuts, fruit, fruit, you know? But anyway, he did ask me to let the city know they're very appreciative.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Egan, thank you for your service with the Maryland Heights Police. We had another Wednesday night out, was very successful, I had Dooley's and Cordy's, we honored the late John and Pearl Dooley with our 27th plaque on the sidewalk, and we're gonna have another Wednesday night out in July, it's gonna be at the Shrine, it's gonna be our movie night, it's gonna be at the Shrine and also Coldwater Commons Park, and that'll be at the last Wednesday in July. We had a great Fourth of July celebration, the chief and I would like to thank the citizens of Florissant for their cooperation in holding down the fireworks at their homes and in other property this past season, it had gotten out of hand in past years, and for the most part, up until the last minute, there was a lot of cooperation, we very much appreciate that, I know the dogs and other pets in the community appreciated not having so many fireworks going off leading up to the Fourth of July during the month of June. We did not have unreasonable expectations, we knew we weren't gonna stop all the fireworks, but the chief and I were very pleased with the results of our efforts to try to educate our citizens that fireworks are illegal by ordinance in the city of Florissant and in St. Louis County. And we're glad that everybody that did attend our fireworks display up at the Egan Center along with the North Winds Concert had great reviews for that show, including the city council. Yesterday, we crowned Miss Missouri, Miss Senior Missouri, Peggy Lee Brennan from Branson, and next year, I'm trying to recruit council member, Tim Jones, to help me with the introduction and the welcoming to all the contestants from around the state. We hold that event every year at our Civic Center Theater, soon to be renamed the Gary Gatos Auditorium. This Thursday, July 14th, is a special day for Florissant, it was celebrated at one time with a lot of enthusiasm, it was celebrated when this was a French possession in the Louisiana Purchase, it's Bastille Day, which is French Independence Day. Also, we have the Flea Market at the Knights of Columbus Park this Saturday, July 16th, from 8:00 to 1:00. I think they have 50 spaces rendered, so there's plenty of flea market items for people to shop for that morning. We have the Food Truck Night was erroneously posted in the focus as August 14th, it's gonna be Friday, August 19th. And also, the National Night Out date is in the focus erroneously as August 2nd, it was actually accurate when we published it, but we've since decided to postpone it until Tuesday, October 4th, when the weather will be a little cooler and we're hoping for a larger participation by the community. You can still have your block parties on August 2nd, but it will not be considered a National Night Out in Florissant. And then this Saturday, we have Coco Soul Band, and I believe we had good reviews on the SSJ Rock Band this past Saturday, so we'll see you at St. Ferdinand Park. Every Saturday between now and the end of August, we'll have a different venue to entertain you at St. Ferdinand Lake.
The next meeting of the city council will be on July 5th, 2025th, 2016. Councilman Lee moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.